Okay. This is the meeting of the Northampton Zoning Board of Appeals. My name is David Bloomberg and I'm here with fellow board members Elizabeth Silver and Sherry Taylor. Along with Nathan Chung from the City Office of Planning and Sustainability, who is providing staff support to the board. This meeting is being recorded. And we have three items on the agenda. Notice of today's hearing was published on September fourteenth and September twenty first, two thousand and twenty-three. And. And before we start, I'll ask that anyone who addresses the board. In connection with any application or for public comment, first give your name and address for the record that's being kept. And before we start with hearing. The three applications before us tonight. We always open with an opportunity for public comment. Which means that if there is any member of the public here. Who is not here to address one of the three applications pending before us. This is your opportunity to address general comments to the board. Again, not related to any of the three applications before us tonight, you'll have a chance. To address any of those applications when we get to them. So I'll ask, is there any member of the public here? Who would like to address general comments to the board unrelated to tonight's applications? Nathan, I'll ask you to help me, are we, we're not seeing any hands up or? Chat messages looking to speak?
None, yeah, yeah, please raise your virtual hand on the reactions or just type a message if you wanna, you know, say something. Uh, this is for.
Public comment unrelated to tonight's three applications. Right, seeing none, okay, so then we'll move on. So again, I'll ask anyone presenting or addressing the board to first provide your name and address for the record. And we'll start with. The application. For a finding. To install a deck that extends the four foot non-conforming left side setback by another eight foot. By another eight feet, the applicant is Zach Kundal. Property is at one nine three Prospect Street, Northampton, map ID twenty-four D dash zero four zero. Uh, and for a finding, we need a simple majority, which would be a vote of two of the three members. I also want to acknowledge. Sarah Northrup, I believe, is with us as well. She is. Another member of the. Zoning Board of Appeals. Uh, and I believe since we have three full members, Sarah. Elizabeth and myself, we will be the three voting members. Tonight, and of course, we welcome the input from Sherry Taylor as well. Um, so is there either the applicant or representative of the applicant Zach Kundal present to? Give a brief description of the uh, application for the finding that's before us?
Yes, my name is Maria Dean. I'm from Perry's Line Home Improvement.
Okay. And your address, please, or your business address?
Uh, it's a P O box. But I'm sorry, I don't have in front of me.
Okay.
I mean, when Zach filled out the application, he actually put his home, his own personal address.
Okay.
The application is for me. I'm Jolie Hettler and I live at one ninety-three Prospect Street in Northampton. I don't know if that's helpful.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Nathan, is that enough for the record if if the contractor who's gonna be addressing? Gives a P O box, which actually hasn't given a P O box?
I I just for the request to be safe, I have Maria's email with the P O box. I'll just read it, um, Marie.
Go ahead, sorry.
Maria, please verify if this is correct or not. Uh, Maria Dean, Parish Home Improvement, one three seven Main Street, P O Box three one two, Haydenville, Massachusetts, zero one zero three nine.
That is correct.
Thank you. Okay, and if you'd like to go ahead and just give a brief description of the uh, relief that you're seeking in the fi- application for a finding?
Yes, we're proposed to build a deck um, eight foot out from the back of one thirty-nine Prospect Street. It will be twenty feet long. In doing so, it will be fifty-six inches away from the property line.
And is that one nine three Prospect? I think you said one three nine Prospect.
Yes, the applicant.
Yeah.
It's one ninety.
One nine three.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, go ahead. Okay.
And you needed more information?
Uh, well, just just the 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 reason that a finding is is required from the zoning board of appeals?
Because Massachusetts zoning requires five feet. And it's gonna be fifty-six inches from our property line, not five feet.
Okay.
So the deck is going to not encroach any more than it currently does, but I'm on a non-conforming lot, so I'm just extending the current um. Line from my house and having the deck go to the edge of my house.
Right, so this is an expansion. Of a non-conformity because. There's already.
I don't think it's an expansion. I think it's. Right? It it it's not an expansion of the non-conforming.
But it's an alteration of a non-conforming structure.
Right, but the setback, I don't think is is changing, isn't that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Okay, uh, any questions from the board members about this application?
I I don't know, um, Nathan, have we had any? Comments from DPW or I I think I. I can't remember if this is the one where we had one comment or if that was the next one, but. Um, are there any comments from either the public or DPW?
Yeah, yes, uh, there was a written comment from the public, um, it looked me one second, one public.
Uh, dear, dear Dr. Dougherty.
And just gonna open it up, sorry, delay.
She she said that if she would. Rec- she would uh, agree, she would consent or approve. Uh. Or give her support to it, provided that the board. Review includes grading and drainage within the scope of the project review and includes a condition that appropriate drainage ensuring infiltration. Within the property is maintained into the future. She said she heard from others in the neighborhood that the is 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 Ms. Ms. Dougherty on the this in the room or on the? Okay, maybe that's why she sent the email. She said she, she said she's, maybe we can ask the applicant or the representative to address this, the. Ms. Dougherty indicated that um. From what? Um.
I can probably address, I don't know, Ms. Dougherty, but I can probably address whatever she heard.
Right, it was mentioned that you've done some landscaping, grading and drainage changes in preparation for the projects. Because of concerns raised by the neighborhoods regarding drainage. And you've applied the drainage so it can infiltrate within. Your property and so no longer direct drain directly to adjacent properties. Is that all correct?
Um, partially, I I was not aware of any drainage issues before I did the the preparation work and the preparation work was just a little bit of grading. In addition to burying a downspout into my yard. And the company that did it had some miscommunications within their. Um, people and um, had to redo everything and install a drywall. It's it's all fixed now. I'm happy to share information, but there there were, there were two days where it was not clear. That what was gonna happen was gonna be friendly to a neighbor and um. Everybody involved, including the owner of the company apologized, and I think I'm getting the work for free because it was kind of a mess. But it's fixed now. Everything goes into a drywall in my yard, there are drywall in my yard that didn't exist before, so if anything, it'll be less water into the neighbors.
Okay, thanks. And I don't think there were any other public comments and Nathan, you said that there were no DPW comments?
No, no DPW comments.
Any other questions from board members?
To close the public hearing?
Second.
Okay, and a roll, since we're virtual, a roll call, please for the vote on the motion to close the public hearing?
Yes, uh, David?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Okay. And do we have a motion on the application for the finding?
Sure, I'll uh, move to approve the um, application for a finding to install a new deck. That will stay within the pre-existing non-conforming left side setback.
Do we have a second?
Second.
By roll call, David?
Uh, it it just occurs to me, even though we closed the public hearing, I don't know that I, and it's kind of too late, cause well, we'll have to deal with it. I'm not sure if I asked if there were any other members of the public here who wanted to address this application. Um. Are you seeing any hands raised, Nathan, or?
Um, yeah, please raise your hands or type in your comment uh, into the chat.
Quite sure what we do about it, but.
Can reopen the hearing, we can. But I I I think everybody here is for.
Is accounted for, okay.
Yes.
Okay, so we're not seeing anyone else, thank you. In that case, yes, why don't we go ahead with the roll call vote on the motion which was seconded to. Uh, grant the. Finding in accordance with the terms of the application.
Right, and uh, by roll call, David?
Yes, in favor.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you. Congratulations.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome. And we'll move on to the second item, well, yeah, it's it's past five forty-five, so we can. Now move to the second item on tonight's agenda, which was the application for a finding to change the garage to. A private studio while retaining the non-conforming zero foot left side setback. Submitted by Livwell Home Improvement at one eighty-one Crescent Street, map ID twenty-four C dash one seven seven. Again, it's a finding, so it requires a simple majority, two out of three member vote. To approve, uh, and the board has to determine that altering the pre-existing non-conforming structure will not. Be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming nature and use of the structure. So is there somebody here presenting or is the applicant here to present, please?
Yes, um, my name's Andrew Biagirelli. I'm here on behalf of Livwell Home Improvement. Um, the project is at one eighty-one Crescent Street. Our business address is one oh six State Road in Waitley. And um, I have provided um. Plans um, as well as scope of work, um. And it's, it's a pretty simple project, um. We are. Uh, we've determined by uh. Taking a look at the structure that's structurally sort of not feasible to convert it as it stands. Um, with roof structure concerns and ability to bring it up to uh, code for um, for R values and and energy efficiency. The walls are too too thin. Um, two by four construction, so. We're applying to. Build a new studio to the exact same proportions. Um, but of course, it's a non-conforming structure. Pre-existing because it sits directly on the left side property line with a zero foot setback, um. But according to the um. I think it's section three fifty dash nine two and nine three. Um, the the conditions are that it not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming structure and. Because it's gonna be used as a private studio and and it will be um. The exact same proportions. Um. We do not believe that it will have any detriment to the neighborhood and we've also made plans to address any potential. Um, any potential issues during construction with, you know, increased traffic in and out of the site, uh. And I've I've also outlined that in the application in terms of the number of vehicles on site and work hours will be, you know, limited to normal daytime business hours, so. Um. Yeah, that's. That's all I have really, more or less, as a summary.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, any questions from board members?
I have a few, but um, is there any other comments like DPW and? Neighbors?
There is actually somebody who just tried to join. He's a commenter uh, for the, he communicated to me earlier, but he's having trouble getting any things, uh, he's actually logging in from uh, Forbes Library to to his own familiarity with the Zoom. Um. Says that there were no um. There were no written public comments, either neither from DPW or or the general public.
Okay, well, my first uh. Question, I didn't. Well, I was curious from looking at the plans, is it uh, originally connected to the building on the next lot?
It is not, that the um, the site plan that I used was a a map that I pulled from the the town's G I S. And there is a garage on the adjoining lot, but they they don't connect. There's a, there's a small amount of space between them, probably about two or three feet.
Hmm.
Yeah, they're pretty, they're pretty close together, but they're not touching, yeah.
Okay, so um. Uh, are we not addressing the use? Is that uh, is that true? With the application?
The use, yes, so the orig- the original use is a garage. Um, the new use is a private studio. For the homeowner, um, so it's it's not a business. There won't be any increased traffic in the neighborhood due to, due to the use because it's just for private, private use for crafting and. Dance and.
Okay.
For that that nature, so.
I got a little confused. You talked about parking and business hours.
Right, yeah, I was, I was more addressing like concerns during constructions because of the. Cause of the nature of the the project of building it back up from the from the ground up, but you know.
Wow, okay, thank you.
The patients said there weren't gonna be more than uh, two people on the premises during construction time.
Yeah, so two two work vehicles, yeah.
Okay, and then just um, I know that there was one other concern. About the egress and that the uh, the exit door, I think you put this in the plans, that it's not gonna be on the. Southeast side, um, it's not gonna be on the side facing the setback. Um, right, right?
Correct, yep, that that wall as it currently stands has no doors or windows and. When we rebuild it, it will remain that way for, you know, privacy and. Uh, all of that.
I don't have any other questions, um, but I know that the owner who's looking to do this is. With us and I didn't know if she had anything to say. To add.
Quick question, and how how long, should we, should we be granted this this uh, zoning board um, approval? How long will the approval be um? Um, active?
Is it two years? Nathan, you have to commence construction within two years, or is it three years in Northampton?
Think it's, I mean, for special permits, two years, apologies, I don't know if it's different for finding, but I think it's safe to say it's probably three years. Or maybe two years, but I think it might be, uh, so special permits have three years. This is a. A little bit lighter than a special permit, but I'll double check that and I'll get back to the applicant uh, with the information.
And and normally, normally. You would have to wait for the expiration of the appeal period, assuming we grant the request for the finding and the appeal period. Is twenty days after the formal decision is delivered. Not not twenty days from today, but twenty days after Nathan's office delivers the decision to the city clerk. At the end of the twenty days, you can get a certified certified copy from the city clerk stating that no appeals have been filed. That should be recorded in the land records. And normally, when you provide a copy of that recorded document to the. Building inspector, that's when the building inspector will issue the building permit. Um, sometimes people can get it sooner, but there's a risk that there could be an appeal filed and then. The standard is. I. Um, within, it's either two or three years and that could be confirmed afterwards. Uh, you have to substantially commence. Work on the project to avoid. The uh. The approval expiring, uh.
But once it's built, that's a permanent change.
Correct, yeah, yeah. If that was the question, yeah, it's where, once you build it. It's permanent. Um, I think if I could just ask, I'm sorry, did you have any other questions? Yeah, okay, um. I think it might be the southwest side wall where we don't want any egress doors, not the southeast, so.
Sorry.
I guess the question for the applicant or the representative is, I'm assuming that wouldn't be, there'd be no objection or concerns if. The board made it as a condition of the fi- approval of the finding. A prohibition on any egress doors on the southwest sidewall. Of the of the replacement structure?
Then that would be fine with me.
Right.
I don't know, I don't know that we'd even be able to squeeze through that.
Right, and that, and also, as I understand it, it should be. Shouldn't present any issues if we required the. Accessory structures used to be limited to. Ancillary storage and workspace for the, to to their single-family residents?
Yeah, it's not a, it's not a a livable, it's not a um, an apartment or anything, there's, there'll be no plumbing, it's uh, is that what you mean, it's uh?
Well, I mean, not plumbing specifically, but it's not not supposed to be for for, yeah, for uh. Ok- for a a living space, a dwelling, it's not supposed to be used as a dwelling, so-called dwelling unit.
Exactly, yeah.
Airbnb.
Right, right. But but if there was a desire to use it for. A workspace or business, does that then prompt a requirement to come back? For another finding, because home businesses under circumstances as we know are allowed, so. If we're putting any limits on that and I, you know, it doesn't sound like this is even anticipated by. The applicant, but if we're putting those limits, is that? Reasonable, because they would otherwise have to come back?
I guess it's a question for Nathan, but the language comes from Nathan's office, the suggested restriction for. Use of for ancillary storage and workspace.
Yeah, I I think. Um, I put down the word after discussing with the my senior staff, um, I'm thinking maybe it creates a little ambiguous. I think workspace, the way we put it meant to be like a. Like a workshop or like a not a professional commercial activity, and so. The board may wanna um, apologize for the ambiguity, but the board may wanna clarify and, you know, put in a restriction that. To clarify that it's not for like a commercial use. Um, I think it just meant, I meant, I think we, our intention was to indicate accessory. Structure meant for like storage or um, acceler- accessory activity. That's not a principal activity.
Not not for dwelling unit and not for commercial or business use.
That's helpful, thank you, Nathan, okay.
And uh, I'm sorry, Chair, um, one thing I wanna clarify, um, this already I addressed it with the applicant or uh, Andrew, I caught it earlier. Uh, the way the captions are written down in the plan, um, it's a little bit incorrect, it's inconsistent, so. Sometimes the captions say the wall without any walls or windows, um. It's one is north, sometimes it's south, so it's a little bit inconsistent, but for the record. Would you, would you clarify that the wall for the proposed building structure? That's facing the uh, lefts, left side lot line with the zero feet setback, could you confirm the that side with the zero feet setback? Is the wall with no windows or walls?
Of course. You want, you want me to confirm that?
Yes, either.
Okay, yeah, I'm just pulling up the the revised plans that I sent you this afternoon, just to, just to clarify it. Uh.
I see the the west, it looks like the. Is it the west elevation?
Yep. It is, yep, the west elevation.
Is the one.
Confirm that is the west elevation. Existing and on the proposed uh. New structure.
And that's the one that faces, so we, we use the term southwest, but. But it's the one that is flush against the lot line.
Correct.
And to the butter to the left, if you're. I think standing on Crescent Street and looking at the building, it's to your left, right?
Yes.
So we really should be saying the west elevation, not southwest.
Okay.
At least as shown on the plans.
As shown on the plans, if if uh. If you need us to change that, we can, we can alter that to say uh, southwest, um. But. Yes, that's, that's correct, that is, it is now consistent in the the updated plans that we received back from the architect today, so.
Yeah.
But in those plans, the west elevation. Appears not to have any doors or windows, is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, looking at the north arrow on the. Lot plan map, southwest seems more accurate than west, but.
Gotcha.
As long as we know which one we're talking about, the wall facing the lot line where there's the zero setback, right?
Correct.
Will have no egress or or windows.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Um, and I wonder if this, the member of the public who wanted to spoke, speak was able to. Get access, do we know?
Yes, either in as reference number two, um. So uh, David, are we allowing for public comments at this point?
I think if there are no more. Questions from board members, we could ask if any members of the public would like to uh. Address the application and questions should be directed to the board, not to the applicant, please. Does anybody want to speak and?
Um, David, I just wanna um, tell reference number two, um, I think you dropped in earlier. If you have trouble with your audio, speaking to the computer, you can chat. Uh, you can type it into the chat and we can, we can read it out for the public. And please say your name and your address.
How did this individual communicate a few minutes ago, Nathan, with you?
They they actually dropped by in person.
Oh.
In the office, so earlier they tried to join as reference number one, which I think is on another Forbes Library computer. They said they'll be. Joining from Forbes Library. So in earlier, reference number one had trouble having connecting with audio and it seems like uh, the person might be having the same issue. But the individual did drop by in person, um. Uh, a couple hours before the hearing.
Do you have any idea of the substance of their comments?
No, the uh, the commenter. Did not actually indicate what he was wishing to say.
Do you have that person's cellphone? Because they can communicate directly just by their phone. We don't have to see them.
Right, um, no, I don't have, I provided with our contact info, but um, he didn't leave me with their contact info and I think the under, the hope. The understanding or and the hope was that they'll be, they'll communicate via Zoom, so. Um, somehow. Yeah, it seems like they don't have any uh. Audio either.
And uh. Do you know which application? The person sitting at reference number two computer, it's this one.
This one, one eighty-one crescent, crescent.
Hmm.
Um.
Not sure what to do, I mean, we, oh, it's like we lost them.
Yeah.
Maybe he'll try to. Call in on a phone?
Yeah, or so. I also offer them the option to call me if they have issues, but they haven't called me, so.
Did you give, give them your your number to call?
Mm-hmm, yeah, I offered, actually, I did offer and he's, he already knew my number well, well before. And uh, I offered to remind him again, but he said he doesn't need it, um.
Do you know if they lived on Crescent Street, Nathan?
No, the um, person didn't really, they dropped by in person, but he didn't identify himself, so um, I don't know his proximity to the applicant's address or any, actually, any personally identifying information, except.
I might ask, I might ask, excuse me, I might ask the applicant if if she might have any idea who this person is. I'm not sure what else we can do, frankly.
I I might, I might have an idea who this person is, um. Yeah, I do, it's possible that he's in a butter um, on Franklin Street, that that, I don't know what, if I can say that, but. That is a possibility, so, um.
Have have you talked to the neighbors again, uh, Ms.?
Only, only the one who who's 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 boundary we share and.
Right.
And they were fine with it, um.
Okay.
So that's the only person that comes to mind, although we do have the notice out in front of the house, so anyone driving by could easily have. Um, seen and. So it sounds like from from what you said earlier, that there's a period. So it sounds like from, from what you said earlier, that there's a period. Between tonight and. Issuing the approval and during which someone can contest or make comments, or is that, is that?
It would be, i- it's, it's a period of twenty days from when the decision is delivered to the city clerk. Normally, the, decisions delivered in a day or two or three, we can ask Nathan that question. And then the twenty day clock starts, and that's for a butters, people with standing, so they really need to be. A butters or within, to file an appeal, but to do that, they. They have to actually, I believe, file a lawsuit with either land court or superior court, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay.
Which is a big step for somebody to take, uh, unless they've already. But, but, um. Okay, well, I, I'm not sure, Nathan.
Nathan has reached out and talked with this individual and given his phone number. Um, I, I think we've done what we can.
Yeah, I'm not sure there's anything else we can do.
And it does appear as though we got in. Twice and. Um, could have had audio, I, I'm not sure how, what the library setup is, but.
Yeah.
Yes, he called earlier yesterday or two days ago, and then. About joining in via Zoom, how to do that, so I gave him a summary, and then he dropped by in person today. Uh, to get clarification and pick up the, a copy of the agenda, which I provided to him. Um, and he specifically said it's about the Crescent Street project, which we are at right now. Um.
We haven't had, this happened since COVID started, where. There was somebody who. Couldn't seem to get through, but I, I, Elizabeth, I, I, I think I agree with you, I'm not sure what else we can do. Um, especially if he had Nathan's number and knew that he could just call Nathan's number on the phone if he wanted to. Be heard if nothing else works, so it's possible that he's. I suppose, decided not. Not to speak, but I, I can't, we can't know that.
Does, does, does the person, um, would the person have access by looking at the agenda to? And I don't, I don't know if the person was on the call when we were discussing the, the sort of parameters of the project. So I don't know. If he learned anything through this meeting simply by listening, that satisfied some questions or concerns.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure when he joined it. To, and to be able to answer, that's a good question, but I don't know the answer, um.
He, he's showing from my memory, he joined a couple minutes in after your hearing started. On this, and then he dropped out, he joined as reference one, and somehow he couldn't have trouble joining with the audio, so dropped out. Um, for whatever region, and then later on tried to rejoin as reference two. And, uh, you know, I asked him if he had trouble with audio to type in. But he may not have, uh. Like, maybe he didn't hear me, but yes, um.
Okay, um.
Well, I think, I think the board just has to make a decision here, if, I'm not sure there's anything else we can do.
Well, feels like we're, uh, making an effort and it is recorded for the record. Um, and. And appeal if necessary, or just ask for more information.
And we've, and we've given, effectively now, we've provided more time to try to. Establish a connection if, if only by calling Nathan, and, and that hasn't happened, so. Uh, I'm inclined to just move forward.
That would be good too, because I'm gonna need to depart soon.
Okay.
I would recommend that we move forward, I feel like. This has gone beyond effort, Nathan has done everything he can, and we have done everything we can to allow this person to speak.
Right. So, so I would just again note for the record that. This individual has Nathan's phone number and now has been given. Five to ten minutes to, to call in effectively. To Nathan's number, if, if he was otherwise unsuccessful and was trying to communicate with us. So I think, should we go ahead with a motion to close the public hearing? Sarah moved and Elizabeth second, maybe.
Okay.
Yeah.
A roll call on that, please.
Yes, uh, my roll call, David?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
And a motion on the application for the finding? If there are no more board questions from the board members. Actually, we can't, we can't get answers, so I think we just have to. We can have discussion and or have a motion on the finding.
Hmm, I'll make a motion. That we. Grant the finding. For the application. Um. Excuse me, let me say the, uh. Uh, for one eighty-one Crescent Street, parcel twenty-four C, what? One seventy-seven as presented.
And with the friendly amendment. If all right with you, um, that. The structure not have egress doors on the. I think we settled on the southwest side wall.
Right.
Um, and that it not be used for. Ancillary storage or commercial purposes.
Uh, it can be used for storage, it cannot be used for dwelling or commercial or business, I think.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. Um.
Is that okay, Nathan?
Uh, yes, one, one more thing, um, uh, besides egress doors, do you wanna require no egress doors or windows, or do you just want to say egress doors?
You know, I, I don't know why windows would be offensive.
Although, although, excuse me, I would point out that the, the plans as presented do not have doors or windows, so.
That is correct.
But also just say as, as presented.
Well. Okay, I mean, we, we could, but I also don't think it offends any. Ordinance or requirements. And it would allow for light in, you know, if they ultimately decided to. Add them, so I, I guess. I, I would not. Be in favor of putting that limit.
I agree, so no egress doors on the. Um. The, uh, setback, the side setback. Side.
The zero feet side setback side?
Yeah. Correct.
Yeah.
You look puzzled, David.
Uh, because there could be a reason you can't have windows, fire rating, but, uh, cause it's so close to the structure next door, but it otherwise has to comply with. All fire safety and building codes anyway, whether we say it or not. So that's why I'm, I'm okay with what we're saying, just no egress.
Uh, I'll second. With all those friendly amendment, amendment, amendments.
A- and, um, just in terms of discussion, um. Uh. I'm, I'm comfortable voting in favor on the basis that I don't think the, uh. Results here would be substantially more detrimental to the characteristics of the neighborhood. Um, might wanna mention that in the record, and then, uh, and then if we're ready for a vote, uh, Nathan, were you clear about the? Motion with the conditions?
Uh, would you clarify, actually, so, did they settle on just, uh, no egress in general or no egress doors?
Egress doors.
Okay.
It's true that a window can be used for emergency egress if necessary, and that would be governed by building code.
Yeah, great. And so, um. Only for ancillary stories, and I'll say ancillary stores and activities. Uh, ancillary to the dwelling, but the structure should not be used for dwelling or commercial purposes.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, I guess we could have a roll call.
Okay, by roll call, David?
Yes, in favor.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Okay, that's unanimous.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I need to leave you, but, um, Sherry is here and you're in good hands, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
Thanks, see you later.
Thank you all.
You're welcome, good, good, good luck with the project.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright.
And, uh, I guess, let me just check the timing here, I think we're probably good for. Uh, when's the next one, uh, six P M, yeah, we're way past six P M, so. So we'll go ahead and hear the third and last item on the agenda tonight, which was scheduled for six P M and it's six fourteen P M, so that's fine. And that's the application for a special permit for an eighty-five square foot awning sign. On a three hundred and eight square foot facade. By Ken Zul Lee at two eleven Main Street. Nice Tea, I think is the name of the business, map ID thirty-one D dash one three six dash zeros zero two. The sign exceeds ten percent of the facade and therefore requires a Z B A. Special permit, it's essentially an oversized sign, as I understand it. Um, so is, uh, there either the applicant or representative of the applicant here to present on this application? But, I think you're muted.
Yeah, they're having audio issues, um.
But it looks like they're muted. I mean, I see the muted symbol.
Please unmute.
I still see the muted symbol, um.
Either.
They're better?
Yes, we just heard you.
Uh, yes, uh. Ken Zul Lee, or otherwise known as Danny is the English name, um, but I'm, my name is Steve Lemieux, and I'm. Uh, uh. A backend kind of person helping him out with, with his business. So I, I wrote a little thing up to give a little history, and is it time for me to read this off?
Uh, sure, is it something that's already in the application?
Well, general information, to give you a background. Um. Ken opened a nice tea bubble tea shop on Saturday, May twenty-seven, twenty-three. We were and are currently working with sign maker Leroy Davidson from L and G Signs and Designs. Leroy was not familiar with planning and zoning policies in North Hampton, we found out through. Our many searches, that of which is needed, we have made efforts to fit in. With our idea for signage for the business, we feel that our awning sign is well-made, not flashy. And to be fitting for the two eleven Main Street area. Nathan, um. Has, uh, has helped us fill in the blanks, trying to secure permission and erecting our sign. We look forward to a favorable decision, so that we can ramp up business through more foot traffic, enhance the area with a beautiful sign. And in-store graphics, which are already there. As a footnote, our product and variety is perfectly delicious for the location, everyone is welcome to sip, relax. And converse with their friends on our comfy couches. Thank you very much for your consideration. Steve, myself, and, uh, Ken.
Thank you.
Uh, did you get the, uh, the speaker's, uh, full name and address?
Uh, Steve Lemieux, L E M I E U X. Twelve ninety-one Parker Street. Springfield, Mass. Oh, one, one, two, nine.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, w- we do have a, a, an email in the file. Addressed to the board that, um. Just wanna make sure the board members are aware of. Uh, it's, uh, seems to be signed by. A butters. At two thirteen, two fifteen Main Street, two forty-one Main Street, one ninety dash one ninety-four Main Street, and one ninety-six dash two hundred Main Street. They said they're pull for, please enter this letter into the record four times. So we're acknowledging that this. Uh. This is, comes from four different butters. And they said the sign dwarfs all other signs on the block, which are thirty percent to fifty percent the size, it is out of proportion to the neighborhood. And while this may not be a statutory reason for objection. We also feel strongly that aesthetically, that kind of glowing sign is not in keeping with Main Street's nineteenth century buildings. General Main Street is less quote garish unquote appearance, there are some very. Few examples of backlit awning signs on Main Street, and even fewer both, both oversized. And done in quote safety yellow unquote. I would expect to see the proposed sign on Riverdale Road in. Springfield or a Midtown Manhattan convenience store, or on the concessions concourse at an arena. I realize this is subjective, but I've been involved in the look of Main Street for almost fifty years. I would call the applicant's attention to the signage for lime red tea house or gumbo. These signs are not in any way staid or old fashioned, they are vibrant and playful. But in my mind, they're interesting aesthetic additions to the street. Thank you. Jordy Harold, Streetscape. Lime red, gumbo, I'm not. Uh, who, I can't quite tell who's signing this other than Jordy Harold, he's. He says he's speaking for those four different butters of those addresses, so for what that's worth. That is in the file, has there been any, any comment from anyone else, Nathan, or from D P W?
Uh, no comment from, um, anybody else in the general public, but the D P W did note that, um. Uh. If the awning structure itself, not the sign, but the awning, it does require what's called a D P W awning and blocking. Uh, permit as well. Um. And. Yeah, so that can happen after this determination, uh. You know, if the board decides to, or whether it, or decides to approve or disprove. If they wish to install some kind of awning, they'll require a D P W permit as well.
Yeah, and has said she has both of those. And when we finish and when the twenty days expires, um, she'll be glad to give them to us and, and go to work on it.
Okay, any questions from other board members?
Uh, can I interject something also? I took another thing. Being the nutball I am. I, I read Jody's email and. I had to take a look today before the meeting to go walk around, and I saw many mega signs. Um. That are close to, if not, almost on top of, uh, our shop. And, uh, that are, that, they dwarf ours, uh, so, um. I, I, I agree with Jody when he said that there are some aesthetically pleasing and that sort of thing. Um, but as far as how many and the percentage, there, there are a lot more. Very large signs on Main Street in that area than he's leading on to believe.
Can you give any examples just out of curiosity?
Took some pictures today.
I'm sorry?
I took some pictures today.
Okay.
And I taught, and I, uh, interviewed some of the customers, the butters next to us, and, and asked how our shop was doing. And all I got was positive responses for three or four of those places. Let's see if I. Got a name for you. Uh, Main Street Cleaners. Then there's that one at two thirty-one, I didn't. Kitchen, that's the one that the iron comes right out to the curb. Um. And then.
Which one is that?
Hanus Jewelers has a huge, um, awning and a sign above that, and it's lit. And then there's one, it's, I got the color of it, let's see. Oh, uh, Peter Pockets is another one.
Is it possible if that's on your phone that you can hold up the picture, because I'm. Trying to picture those things and I'm not seeing them as big awnings.
Have you seen that?
No, unfortunately.
W- one thing I can do is, I can share a street, a Google Street View.
There you go.
And I think the problem is, uh, I don't, I think my mistake, my mistake, I accidentally made Steve Galaxy, Steve's Galaxy tab the host rather than me. So, Steve, are you controlling the other Galaxy tab as well?
Am I what?
Do you have a second Galaxy tab that's connected to Searing?
Yes.
Could you, I, I don't know how it happened, but could you make me the host again, this is so embarrassing, but could you make me the host?
Or Steve leaves the meeting.
We had, we had got away, it wasn't working properly, but you want me to hook back onto it, you're saying?
You know, it's, it's okay, um.
He could just. Leave the meeting.
Oh, yeah, would you leave the meeting on the Galaxy tab, could you, on the Galaxy tab, could you leave the Galaxy taps meeting, just drop by entirely? Yeah.
Okay, Danny, how do I? So leave the meeting, right?
Oh. You, you, you wanna leave?
Yeah.
Change it?
Cancel it, yeah.
Okay.
Or. Make someone else the host.
Yeah, either make me the host, you, I, sorry about this, yeah.
No, I, I would do it, it's the first time I've done Zoom, I think we're out. Is it show you? Are you out of it? Am I out of it?
No.
Oh, no, good.
In the meantime, actually, I can. I can share the, actually, I'm allowed to share the screen, it seems like.
Go ahead. David is the host.
Okay, great. Um, I'm gonna go to Google Maps and then share some. Share some signs on the um. The.
So. While you're pulling that up. Is it, uh, it sounds like what? You're discussing, Mr. Steve, applicant representative. Um, that the sign they're proposing, um, you're suggesting that it is. Not um out of character with others. Presumably permitted signs, and and that's something I don't know, I don't have. Knowledge of and evidence of the approved permit applications for all the other signs on Main Street. And their compliance with uh section seven point two M. Which is pretty clear.
That's much smaller, the Hanush Jewelers, okay.
Wow, look at that.
Which would suggest they didn't need a permit because it's not an oversized sign.
Which one? Oh, but even with that awning?
I think there may be, so it's. It's something more for the building commission to review. There may be a potential unnoticed issue with the sign, so. You're allowed, um, if you have an awning, you're allowed a one wall sign or an awning sign, but not necessarily both without a special permit. But by default, on the awning. You have by right, you can have a four inch tall uh awning sign on the edge of the awning or the bottom edge of the awning. Four inch tall, either on the front or on the two sides. So this uh particular business does have that um. Large H symbol on the awning in addition to the wall sign, that. That may be an issue, uh, either they already have a special permit, I didn't go as far to verify whether they have a special permit. Or they they might not have one, but it 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 is a a condition that may require a special permit in most cases, so.
The right, if you, can you scroll to the right?
Yeah, oh, yes.
Oh.
Yes.
The huge sign, where is it? Um, oh, why is that all blurry over there?
Oh, it's uh some kind of a confidential, it's confidentiality issue, Google's.
Catching up.
Oh, yeah, catching up the fog. You, you want to look at Peter Pockets or other, can you tell me which business you want to look at?
I'm, I'm just trying to look up the name of it. Oh, that's uh, yeah, that's uh, Kian's right here.
All right.
Black car is is our place.
Yes.
But to the right of that is a huge, huge sign. And I talked to the people, they hadn't been in our store yet. Um, but they said they had no problem with it being there and they they want to try it. But down there where beyond the the alleyway. Where that black car is. Oh, that green one, right about there.
Synergy.
Yes, yes, that's it, that's the name, Synergy, yep.
So you'll also note that their. Facade is much larger. So as a.
Right, but still, if. Still looks to be about thirty-three percent and ours is twenty-seven percent. And I was just, I was, goes up higher, like theirs does, I suppose, yeah.
So I'm not prepared in this. In this meeting for us to be uh reviewing every sign permit.
Right.
Main Street, so that 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 gets problematic to get into that. Level of comparing details when, what's before us, the application before us is for. Uh, what what you've submitted and um. So it it sounds like. When I hired a sign maker, they weren't aware of the sign regulation. Uh, and. That is pretty clear about the ten percent of the wall area, et cetera. So you have a sign. Um, you also have a sculpture thing there, that's a different issue. Um, but. Uh, that's what we're calling that cup, um.
Oh, the.
Um, so the the fact that you you've you've ordered a sign and you have a sign or an awning sign that. Uh, money was spent on it and you're hoping to use it because you've bought it. Uh, but it was not. No permit was ap- applied for and the sign maker didn't look at the regulation. Small, uh, so this sounds more like a. Waiver. Request, which we just don't do. Am I, what, what do you think of this, David, as far as uh the applicable laws? Um, you know, substantially more detrimental is not our only. Sometimes that's the only thing we're concerned about, but here it's just a. To me, it's just too big.
Yeah.
It's not illuminated.
Right, in this case, it's, the standard is whether it. Will detract from the character of the neighborhood. Uh, considering all components, um. I mean, there is a reason. For the regulation. Which is that the surface area of the sign shall not be larger than ten percent of the frontage wall area of the facade. Um. Um.
We don't write these regulations, these are city regulations, we evaluate and uphold them, that's all we do.
Yeah, I'm uh.
You know, he's he's certainly got a point comparing it to other. Places in the neighborhood, quote unquote, massads, so that 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 point is well taken.
Right, but I don't think the issue, I agree with you, Sarah, it's, we're not in a position to. Unless we continued the hearing, um. To research all these other signs that are cited. Whether they were granted by permit or otherwise required a permit that was never applied for or granted. Uh, the only standard, as I understand it, that we're supposed to apply is. Whether this sign as proposed, which is in excess of what's allowed. In terms of the surface area. Would detract from. The char- the neighborhood, the character of of the neighborhood and. I mean, the the. The experts at the Office of Planning and Sustainability. Feel, feel that it would. Um, and they're recommending denial of the application. On that basis, um. I am sensitive to. Wanting to make sure that. No one business is not treated differently than other businesses. But we're not really in a position to address that issue because. We have no other information. About the other signs that have been referenced. We don't really even know what their sizes are and what their dimensions are and. What their surface area is relative to the size of the facade on each building and. Um, and as a result, I think. What we're asked to do is just make our own determination of this sign as proposed and. I also am sympathetic to the fact that. This sign was ordered and prepared and presumably has to be paid for or was already paid for. Um, but I also don't think that. That is relevant to the standard that we're supposed to be applying here, even as much. As sympathetic as I am to that, um. I don't know if uh. Sherry, if you have some thoughts on this?
I I do have one question I'd like to clarify, I I'm looking at the applicable laws, so I don't know if you can see me while I'm talking, but. Um, the first applicable law that's mentioned. Is that the area of the sign should be the smallest quadrangle, which encompasses. Encompasses all of the letters, designs and symbols. It is not the surface area of the awning, but the smallest rectangle. And I know that, you know, in terms of this whole issue of fairness, I agree that one, one. Store or a business should not be singled out, but. Even the ones he did show us, like for example, the Hanush. The actual letters, designs and symbols were a much smaller proportion of the awning. This entire awning is covered with symbols and surfaces, and I think that's where it really. Is different than the other things you see in town. Um, but I am sympathetic, the man's paid for this, I I do understand that. Um, um, at the same time, it's clearly not fitting this law.
Would it help the board if I screen share the the submitted sign or do you not need that?
Yeah, that would be helpful, I think.
Okay.
Consider, you know, look at everything here.
Right.
I mean, it was in the package, I think, it's in. Seen it in the application.
Yes.
But but it could be helpful to look at it again on the screen.
Yes, give me one second, sorry about that. Um.
And that would clarify also how it was measured. For square footage, perhaps. Depending on how you measure it, perhaps the uh excessive. Maybe, maybe it isn't really twenty-seven point six percent, maybe it's only twenty-three percent, but. Um, the point, it's got several images on it, go ahead, Sharon.
I'm sorry, I really didn't mean to interrupt you, but I I look, I was looking at it as I was talking about this applicable law and. The law is that it is the actual, so where the N is in the nice T, if that was just there, it would. Probably fit in the law, it's the fact that the entire front is covered, I think, is where it takes it. Outside of the law. As I understand the law.
Which kinds of begs a question that may or may not be helpful to ask, and that is. Since the sign has already been ordered and it sounds like it's been prepared, could it be modified? Could it be reduced in size so that? It's just, uh, if I understand what Sherry is saying correctly, just consists of. The material, you know, necessary to include the nice T in words and maybe that image. To the left of the words, is that consistent?
Maybe the image to the left and the image to the right, if they were out, it would, it seems to me it would fit into the law.
Additionally, the two images on the ends. Um, which are shown with dimensions as forty-four by twenty-four inches. Um. Perhaps not necessary, I don't, I don't really know what that green triangle thing is on the left.
Um, it's a cheesecake.
Oh. Good to know, um, I wouldn't really expect it. Tea leaf, um, so it may not serve their purposes particularly well, but that's a good point, is that. The structure of it, it may be appropriate to keep the structural size of it because it's designed to be mounted on the side of. On the front of the building. But, um, it might not be, it's certainly worth. Letting the applicant look into whether they can somehow modify that sign to bring it into compliance. Uh, even with all of that bright yellow area.
The the bottom line is that if they did modify the sign to bring it into compliance so that they did not need a. Special permit from this board. Then they would just be putting up something that they, as of right. Um, which effectively may be the necessary.
That'd be great.
Their necessary remedy or recourse if if we. Accept the recommendation of the Office of Planning and Sustainability here.
So can I just clarify, Nathan, I don't know if you can answer this or if it has to go back to the drawing board, but. If the cheesecake went away and the and the and the two things on the right side, would it be in compliance or is it still too big?
I, you know, it's hard to tell visually, possibly, um. Yeah, so a couple of things, so there are some couple discrepancies in the application, so. The total area of the sign for the this hearing, it's really the yellow area, not the black area, but the applicant included the black area as well and. There was some communication, you know, I explained to them, it's only the actual smallest rectangle that fit around the sign. Um. Uh, so it really like, you know, the actual area of the sign, proposed sign is a little bit smaller than what the applicant put down. Because you really look at, you're looking only at the shapes on the yellow surface. Having said that, um, it's hard for me to say, I mean. Um, it's hard for me to say if removing those food shapes, the cheesecake on the left and the two soda cans on the right will. Uh, make it by right compliance, it's a little bit unclear, I think though, because. It'll reduce, it'll probably result in more than half the reduction of the um, of the area, it may actually, um. I think at that point, you might actually comply, let me do a quick math if it's okay with you and.
Either that or we could continue, that we could entertain a request to continue. The hearing in order to get answers to those questions, which might be better for the applicant than. Than a negative vote here.
Um, can I ask the applicant, does he know if this could be silk screened out, because I do think it might put it in compliance.
Did we, did we lose the applicant? I'm not seeing anybody.
Oh, oh, no, he's a, he's, yeah, Steve is still here, Steve, can you unmute?
Okay, all right, can you hear me now?
Yes, yes.
I, I, I haven't talked to Danny about it yet, but my feeling was. That based on what Nathan just said about that black area is not part of the facade or the the area of the sign. If that weren't counted and if we took the yellow. Um. Cut the yellow from the right side of of the nice tea and to the left side and sewn. Those two, the two cups and the the cheesecake, sewn them on the end. It it may be doable and maybe bring us down to where we need to be.
Should we continue the hearing to give you a chance to? To look into that and see what's not only feasible, but but also. Whether that doesn't just get you into compliance with the with the ordinance.
Right, right, um. I would have to re-measure everything because Leroy had put in forty-four. Where, and that's not gonna be forty-four. And we would have to measure the yellow area that would come out. I think you can settle those back together and put them on the. A little sub- structure, so I think, um, I think.
Much the yellow.
Couple of uh incisions.
Is it the yellow area or the images? That are the problem?
Think I, um, if I, if I may speak, may I speak?
Sure, yep.
Yeah, I think it, so basically, um. A special permit requirement for signs get triggered if it's uh greater than ten percent of facade or if there are multiple signs. So it's a little bit ambiguous interpreting this because you have three separate shapes, um, taking up the front of the surface. So arguably, it's either three separate shapes, the cheesecake, the nice tea logo and the two. Drink cups, or it's one large sign that just kind of spread out over a very large surface area. Either way, though, the way it's presented, uh, it'll require a special permit and even if the applicant does a corrected calculation. Not including the black sh- striped area, even then it'll, uh, it'll still go over the ten percent maximum. And the other factor to consider is, um. The side, extra side signs, side awning signs, uh, those will be also considered multiple signs. You know, so just the one front awning sign is allowed by rights, uh, that's within the maximum area of ten percent. But this has a multiple aspects that require a special permit to grant the approval.
If it was just a yellow awning with the. Large N and the word nice T, where's nice T, with more other images. Um, would you call a yellow awning, the whole thing a sign?
No, no, just if hypothetically, if we're only looking. No, no, just if hypothetically, if we're only looking, if this proposed sign only had a. The nice tea logo in the middle with the the uh the graphical N and the nice tea words, if it has just those in the proposal. Uh only that. Area would count as the sign, uh the smallest rectangle that can um is enclose the entire shape, the N and the nice T. That would be to consider the area of the sign, not the entire yellow area.
So it sounds like you're saying if they if they simply. Uh I think Sheri said silk screen or airbrush or whatever it takes. Eliminated the cheesecake and maybe that might be, I wonder if that's bubble tea on the right.
Yes.
Yeah, that's correct. Cups on the right. They be in compliance, is that what you're saying?
Possibly, yes, I I it's hard for me to do like an act, uh I mean, it's, I think it's really on the honest and applicant to provide remeasurements if.
So if we, if we continued the hearing in order to do that. It sure beats having to throw away the sign. Um and I wonder if that isn't a good idea for everybody to take the time to. Uh confirm. Whether that's feasible and hopefully confirm that. If you're just taking the. The surface area around the words nice tea with the N logo to the left. If you're less than ten percent.
You'd be fine.
Were, you'd be fine, so doesn't that seem like a, which was, I think, Sheri's suggestion in the beginning here? That could be an elegant solution here.
And actually, I think it would be quite attractive.
Nice, sir. Instead of what is that green triangle?
Right, although, again, we don't, we don't, um I mean, we are looking at detracting from the character of the neighborhood, but we also want to be careful about. About um trying to dictate the contents of signs.
Yes. But I I do think that honestly, if just that center part. Then it definitely would be in compliance and the whole thing would be done. I mean, that's my opinion and obviously, I'm not the one making that decision, but I think. The idea of continuing this, letting these people have the opportunity to go back and see if they can change this. Talking with Nathan and having it re-measured. Um that makes more sense than our rejecting it and them having to start lose all this money.
Right. Right, how how does the applicant feel about this suggestion?
I think uh speaking for Danny, we're we're good. We can uh work this.
So what we, so we could, I'm sorry, go ahead, sir.
And get it in, we'll get it into compliance, we're just looking at how it would look, we're just imagining it and we think we're okay.
So um why don't we, I mean, the two options are to entertain a request to continue this. Or. A request to withdraw it without prejudice, but it probably makes more sense to just continue it. In the hopes that Nathan will get a. Will be able to confirm with you after today that. Based on the modifications you're able to make and the measurements. That are derived as a result. You you could, then you could withdraw the application and because you don't need it. Na- Nathan, is this making sense to you? Are we going off the rails here or is this?
No, I I think it's a very um. But I don't know if I can use a word wise, but I think it's a very thoughtful. Um option, uh the board is offering to the applicant, um especially, I did not know that the applicant has actually already. Produced the sign. Uh my understanding was that this was a a proposed design. Well, I think that's a very um a a thoughtful option considering the applicant's constraints, um. The one thing I want to emphasize is that, so um. Though while the board cannot regulate the content or the color. Uh it is in your jurisdiction for the special sign permit uh to. Consider the size of the sign to be over the limit and also the number of signs rather than just one to allow for multiple signs. So um.
Flap, the flap on the end, the right one and the left one are all sewn into. Uh. The sign, it's it winds up being one piece, is that still considered three pieces?
Yes. I would think so. Facing another direction. Not more images.
Yeah, it's uh extra, so you know, it it that it that requires a special permit too because. You know, awning sign can have a one front sign by default. On the size, on the ends right now where the um drink cups are or the bubble teas are, the side flaps. You are by right allowed to have four inch tall sign on the size, a little just text and descriptions, but if it goes taller than that. That'll, that's also part of the special permit requirement, so.
What if we, if we didn't have advertising on it, just had the yellow color? Would that still be considered three pieces?
No, it's it's the logos and the text and the images that turn it into a sign.
Right, that's what I mean, so if I can, if I can have him change. The twenty four by forty four N piece on both sides to be just yellow. Then that would be okay.
That would decrease your non-compliance.
Right.
The whole job, but yes.
In addition to ten percent, but I mean, because it it wouldn't be three separate signs, right, Nathan?
No, yeah, it would be. Yeah, it'd be, but I want to remind the applicant, you you are by right, uh on the awning, you can have four inch tall. Uh bottom signs, either on the two side edges where the current flap is or the front bottom edge of the. Uh awning, one or the other, but because you uh will probably keep, wanna retain the nice tea logo in the front. Uh putting the four inch side signs on the side of the awnings uh might makes more practical sense. Um and.
Oh, I see.
Yeah. Yeah, you can, I'm sorry, uh yeah, um you can talk about it in more detail um after the hearing. Or after we continue, if you to or decide to continue, we can converse in between.
That'll be great.
One question, I and I I just can't see the picture big enough to know, but it looks like there's a bunch of signs on the doors and. And windows, do those have to go away or or what? I'm not, I I just can't see it well enough.
Oh, it's a separate, thank you, Sheri, for bringing that up, it's a separate building commissioner matter, you are allowed to have um. Um up to twenty percent of the window glazing can have signs, um and. There are actually more signs than the proposed drawing, uh when we look at Google view, you can actually see more signs. Uh but that's a separate uh building commissioner issue, also a factor for you to consider and. The cup, the large sculpture cup with the logo on the front that we saw earlier. And I can bring up the Google Maps again if you want, that's also considered the ground sign and that requires another. Or the Ministry of Site Plan um approval with the staff, it's a hundred dollar simple approval process, but. That's something um the city, I think, I might have missed, but those are some other factors, so there are existing signs, but it's under a different um. Different jurisdiction.
Yeah, the the sign to the right. That has, it looks like times in it or floor numbers, that's part of that building with the black door, I think it's a. Apartments or something that it goes. Uh it goes in, so that's not part of. Nice tea or two eleven Main Street, that's part of that building on the right. Top, it says Russ Block, Russell's Book Block.
Yes, that's not part of your facade.
I know this is not part of our zoning board thing, but it makes me laugh, um I I think the cup is adorable, but um. Uh I'm picturing everybody using it as a garbage can, I'm a little concerned about it.
Well, um it is a nice spot and uh wishing them luck and I'd like to. Uh clarify our strategy at this point. Um we will respond to. Uh we can either, well, maybe David can wants to weigh in on this, we uh. Do we need the applicant to request or we can just, we can just?
No, no, I think, I think the, I think the applicant has to request the. Uh Nathan, is that? Do you have a?
Yes, uh yes, and uh yeah, applicant can request. And it might. Be safer option because. Even with the proposed changes, there is a chance that the nice tea logo in the middle might slightly. Just go over the ten percent, just in the remote chance because we don't have an accurate number. But yes, applicant has to request the continuous, from my understanding.
Yeah. So is that, and and then we'd have, assuming the applicant wants to do that and. Give them a chance to speak, um we would have to figure out when, because I think the three of us. Would have to be present at the next meeting. When this is continued, so unless, of course, we don't know now, unless the applicant is able to withdraw the application, because. It's can be done as a right.
Yes.
No, I can, uh if we had a, is it two weeks, does that sound like, uh I mean, I don't know where.
Yeah, the next, excuse me, I'm sorry, the next meeting, I should have said this. I think because it's the second Thursday of the month would be October twelve. It's not a great day for me, although I can tell you October twenty eighth, I'm definitely away, um. No, uh did I say, yeah, October twenty sixth is, I I told Nathan a while ago, I'm I'm unavailable that night.
I'm also unavailable the twenty sixth, but I could do the twelfth.
Um.
Otherwise, we're going to November ninth.
Yeah, no, if I I guess. Oh, okay, I I could probably make the twelfth work, um. It's not ideal, but I think I can make it work, I might have to phone in from the car, but uh. So so would, does the applicant want to request a continuous to October twelfth, which is the next available meeting date? At five thirty P M?
Yeah, because we're gonna cut down. I'm gonna change that with Leroy.
Okay.
So it's smaller and fits in with there.
Oh.
Okay, yeah. The twelfth is good for both of us.
Okay, so that, so I take it that's a request, um. I think that, does that need, Nathan, do we, do we have to have a motion to grant the request for? A contin- I think we do, actually, I think we do that all the time. So I guess we just need a motion to grant the request to the applicant. To continue the hearing until. Five thirty P M on October twelfth and. All three of us will be there, right, Sarah as well, Sarah, Sheri and me, okay?
Yes.
But do we have a motion to grant the that request?
So moved, well said.
And I'll second that.
Thank you.
Roll call you.
Uh Sheri?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
David?
Yes, that's unanimous, Sheri, thank you for that breakthrough idea. There was, that was really brilliant, um.
I like being brilliant.
Uh okay, good, so we'll. Uh we'll wait to hear through Nathan's office what the applicant is able to do in addressing. The reconfiguration of the sign to bring it into clients without the need, yes, Nathan? Question?
Oh, I'm. I'm sorry, uh I was waving to Sarah.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. So um. Okay.
This public hearing, but we can close our public meeting?
Correct, um. Uh yeah, the the hearing remains open. On this application. And I I don't think we had any minutes to approve, right?
No.
I think, and I don't think, is there anything else we need to discuss procedurally unrelated to this application? I don't think so.
Um I think I just want to mention one thing, so if the applicant determines they're gonna meet the ten percent with the modifications. They also have the option of withdrawing the application.
Exactly, that that would, that would be my expectation, they would file a. The request to withdraw the application to close it out. Um. Cause otherwise we have to take action on it and that's a kind of a waste of everybody's time. So, okay, so hopefully that's what they'll be able to do in the next couple of weeks till before the twelfth. All right? So I guess, I guess we'll have just a mo- we've granted the motion for the continuous, that hearing is still open, it's continued to the twelfth. Um and and now I guess we can just have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, I second.
And then roll call.
By roll call, David?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
And Sheri?
Yes.